Automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will begin with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and we're going to do the recognition and proclamations and then one of the presentations and then we'll recess from that and go back and go into the Board of Equalization. So, Mr. Esch, roll call for the Board of Commissioners, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Mr. Kraft, Mr. Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Our first is a recognition of county employee Judy Jurecki retiring from the Omaha Convention Visitors Bureau after seventeen years. Dean Miller is here. Is Judy here? There she is. Hello, Judy. I'll read the resolution that we have for Judy. Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes that its employees are the county's most valuable resource for providing quality service to the citizens of Douglas County, whereas Judy, AKA Ninja Jurecki, began her employment with Douglas County on July 13th, 1998, as a receptionist answering the phones for the Douglas County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Judy continued to move up within the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, serving in key roles such as an administrative assistant, billing clerk, travel coordinator, executive assistant, sign language interpreter, translator, and most importantly, as the office mom. Whereas Judy is the real mother of and a half of dozen children, mother-in-law to their spouses, and most importantly, grandmother to her twenty-plus grandchildren. Whereas Judy has entertained the office with her wild stories of traveling the globe, including visiting the lands of Elts, the Queen's Castle, and her one-woman trek across Jerusalem. Whereas Judy has earned the nickname Ninja for her ability to appear out of nowhere to solve problems everywhere. Whereas Judy has served the Omaha community with integrity and distinction at every level and has been an invaluable resource for not only the office personnel but for many citizens and visitors across the country. Whereas Judy has worked tirelessly over the last seventeen years making Omaha a destination city. The Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau and Douglas County would like to offer a sincere and most deserved thank you to you, Judy, for the service to the citizens, and we wish her well on her retirement. She will deeply be missed by all. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that the county recognizes Judith A. Jurecki for her dedicated service to the citizens of Douglas County and thankfully presents this resolution as testimony thereof, dated this 26th day of April 2016. Could I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Judy, seconded by Morgan. Please vote. With that, Judy, I would offer the mic to you and/or Dean, whoever wants to add any comments.
I've got to say thank you to Douglas County. I feel real blessed that I was able to work here and your support, especially during the time we transitioned, was great. I thank you all.
Well, thank you, Judy. Dean?
And I just wanted to add, Judy's been with us for seventeen years. I've worked with her over the last several years. I can't say any more than what the resolution already did, but what I will say as a staff over all these years, if you needed something, whether it's IT, whether you needed a document, whatever you needed, everyone seemed to find Judy and Judy would always find it. And, you know, we're really going to miss that, but we do want to wish her well because this is a well-deserved retirement, so we want to thank Judy. Thanks.
And if we could thank you again and then have you come and shake our hands and we'll give you the resolution for you to keep. [applause] Thank you very much. Good luck on your retirement. Thank you very much.
Oh, I will, I will.
Yeah. The next resolution is a resolution in recognition of the centaria of Ireland's independence on April 24th, 2016. And Commissioner Kavanaugh, you brought this to the board.
Thank you.
Do you want to read the resolution?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes. I think that we have a representative of the ancient order of Hibernians, Dr. Larry Bradley, if you'd come down, who's president of the Father Flanagan Division of the Ancient Order of Hibernians and has headed up a celebration of the centennial of the Declaration of Irish Independence, a hundred years ago this week. On Saturday, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Kraft and I had the pleasure of joining Dr. Bradley and a large group of the Omaha Irish here at the Civic Center for a memorial service marking the commencement of the centenary celebration of Irish independence. A hundred years ago Sunday and throughout this week, the Irish declared their independence and rose in arms to assert their independence in Ireland. And I'm happy to say that they were successful in establishing a free and democratic republic of Ireland at that time. They were helped materially and in many other ways by the Irish in America. And I'm proud to say that my grandparents participated in this effort on behalf of the Irish people to achieve their independence. And they were inspired by many of the same tenants of freedom and democracy that inspired our founding fathers in 1776 to declare our independence from the same British Empire that the Irish felt necessary to declare theirs. And so, a committee of local Irish Americans has been working hard over the last year to set up a series of events in honor of the Declaration of Irish Independence a hundred years ago. And on Saturday, Dr. Bradley and the Father Flanagan Division of the Ancient Order of Hibernians kicked off the celebration with a memorial service on our plaza and a wreath lane there. On Sunday, there was a dramatic presentation at the Jocelyn Art Museum, sponsored by all of the Irish cultural groups in Omaha and the Nebraska Humanities Council. And tonight, there is a screening of "The Wind That Shakes the Barley" at Film Streams at, Film Streams at, I believe, six o'clock, sponsored by the Omaha Irish Cultural Center and Film Streams and the Nebraska Humanities Council. Again, we are proud and happy to have one of the leaders of the local Irish-American community here today to address us. And Dr. Bradley, I don't know if you'd like to add a few comments before we read the resolution.
Yes, Commissioner, just a few. My name, Lawrence Bradley, L-A-W-R-E-N-C-E-B-R-A-D-L-E-Y, 6068 Country Club, Oaks Place, Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. As you know, many of us, we wear many hats, but one of them, I am the current president of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, Father Flanagan Division, but I'm here today as just a citizen. And I will, on this resolution, and Commissioner Kavanaugh did, you know, bring us all up to speed on much of what was happening, but it was my pleasure to be able to go over to Ireland and Dublin last month during the Easter weekend and be part of and watch and see a lot of the history, the documentaries, concerts, plays, parades, reenactments of this. And at many, many of these events, it was said over and over how the Irish people were, they recognized the United States of America for being the first country to recognize their independence. And they were very appreciative of that. And so for this board, you know, Douglas County of Nebraska, to have a resolution like this, it means a lot and so really appreciate it and hope you would vote in favor of this. And I do want to thank the Douglas County Commissioners and all, and, you know, the event that we had Saturday, the weather was great. It was very beautiful and very meaningful. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley. I note that there are some other noted local Irish-Americans in the audience and active in the Irish community, Colin Kavanaugh and Terry Leahy. Thank you for coming and we appreciate your support for all you do on Irish cultural activities in Omaha. I'd like to read the resolution that Senator Boyle read on Saturday at the memorial service.
Senator, my acceptance speech is Senator. I'll give that in just a moment.
Very good. Thank you. He's usually very tongue-tied, so this is a rare occasion when we'll actually be able to hear him speak forth. But the resolution reads as follows. Board of Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, whereas on April 24th, 1916, the people of Ireland declared their independence from the British Empire and established the Republic of Ireland, and whereas the Irish in America were among the first settlers in the city of Omaha in Douglas County, Nebraska, and whereas the Irish-Americans in Omaha and Douglas County have made great contributions to our community in both the public and private sectors, and whereas the Irish-Americans in Omaha and Douglas County have always supported freedom and democracy and self-determination for the people of Ireland, and whereas the Irish people have always recognized the Irish-American community as an integral part of the Irish diaspora worldwide, and whereas the Irish people have expressed their gratitude for the help and support they received from the Irish-American community in their struggle for independence. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby extends its warmest congratulations to the people of Ireland on their independence and the establishment of their democratic government, the Republic of Ireland, dated this 26th day of April 2016, by the board. Thank you.
Is that a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Second. Is there a motion by Kavanaugh, seconded by Morgan? Please vote. Any further comments? Commissioner Boyle?
I enjoyed my running commentary with my fellow board member who is Jewish, and I pointed out to him this morning that, and it was very, very nice of him to come to the celebration of the Irish, but I have to tell you, there was a large Jewish population in Ireland and Dublin. And I just quickly looked up something on the internet and discovered Michael Nork was an Irish Republican and solicitor during the Irish War of Independence. So throughout history, the Jewish people have supported people who were being oppressed and likewise, some of us did, maybe some of us not as well as we should have. But it's an interesting history between the two of us that goes back quite a few years. My family wasn't in Ireland in 1916. They had already been packed on boats and sent to Canada. It was cheaper for the landowners to send the Irish people off the farms, and they sent them to three major cities, Savannah, Georgia, New Orleans, New York, and to Ontario, Canada. And all of my family ended up in Canada and every one of them is just amazing. My mother's family was carted off by about 4,000 of them to northeastern Iowa, to a town called Macoketa. And they lived in a town called Lost Nation. And there were about 4,000 Irish that were brought there by a priest. And I looked at my grandfather there once, Thomas F. Ryan, and there were 47 of them in the town. So don't cross the Irish in Macoketa. I'm very pleased to be honored, pleased to be allowed to speak this morning. I appreciate it very much. And Commissioner Kavanaugh, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry, for being here. Next is a resolution declaring April 24th through the 30th as National Reentry Week in Douglas County. And I will read this resolution and then I know there's someone in the audience who would like to speak to it. Whereas the United States Department of Justice reports that nearly one quarter of Americans has had some sort of encounter with the criminal justice system, most for nonviolent offenses. And whereas individuals with criminal records face serious and complex obstacles when reentering the community, including encountering barriers to employment, housing, higher education, and credit. And whereas the United States Department of Justice has declared April 24th through the 30th, 2016, as National Reentry Week, to encourage and highlight work supporting successful reentry. And whereas thousands of offenders annually are released from federal, state, and local correctional supervision into Douglas County and without access to adequate support services, many of the released individuals reoffend and return to correctional supervision. And whereas Douglas County has received multiple Second Chance Act grant awards from the federal government to support strategic planning and innovative reentry programming efforts to reduce recidivism and preserve public safety. And whereas Douglas County and its valued partners throughout the criminal justice system and community collaborate to develop comprehensive reentry solutions and address commonly identified risk factors that persist among the justice-involved population, including untreated mental illness and homelessness. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby declares April 24th through the 30th, 2016, as National Reentry Week in Douglas County, and this board encourages all Douglas County residents to take due note of this observance, dated this 26th day of April 2016. And with that, I would ask for a motion to approve. There is a motion by Boyle, seconded by Rogers. Please vote. And is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak to this resolution?
Good morning.
Good morning.
As a member of that returning population, I want to just say thank you to this board without trying to, without tearing up for the second chance opportunities that you guys have given me. When I first came back to Omaha, I reached out to Commissioner Borgeson, and she held meetings with each of you to introduce you or reintroduce me back to you, to this community. Since that time, I've had an opportunity to build a reentry program that hires five individuals. In 2015 alone, we helped 111 families find jobs. Sixty-eight of those people are still employed, generating an income of $1.7 million to the Nebraska community, most of it earned in Douglas County. Given the high cost of recidivism, reentry is not only a moral obligation, but it's an economic necessity. And I want to thank this board for being very supportive of the reentry efforts in Douglas County, because you've opened up so many doors, not just for me, but for the over 200 people that we serve annually in terms of men, women, and children. We take reentry from the approach of helping adults as well as our youth, and you all have been very supportive in funding a youth program that has been very successful. The average retention rate of employment is 84% of our adults who we help find jobs. We have managed in this, since coming back home and building the organization, we've managed to partner with 74 employers who hire from our program exclusively. We have one of the best construction programs this community has to offer. And so all of that would not be possible had it not been for the support that this board gave to me when I reached out to you, and I would be forever indebted. You've allowed me to reengage with my family. My daughter is a very successful attorney now. And all that was possible because she saw how I was able to overcome the barriers that I would have to encounter as a person that was returning back to their community. And so again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I will be forever indebted to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. And this step that you're taking today is one of many that's being taken throughout the country this week. And I applaud you for your leadership in showing that you do support reentry efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Levon. Levon, there's a couple of Collins. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I just want to say that Ms. Dennis represents all that is good about second chances and spreading that happiness and the opportunity to others has been a real goal of hers, and she's done a terrific job here. Just, we're so fortunate to have you as a collaborator on this very important effort. Thank you very much, Levon.
You know, Levon, before you sit down, or Commissioner Kraft, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
Yeah. Levon, we've known each other for a long time, and you know I used to hire many people who were on parole or after they were released. Excuse me, my voice goes out. We need to get more employers involved, though. We need to somehow encourage the small hardware store owner, the small convenience store owner, because not all of the people in prison are bad things. They just are bad people. They just did a bad thing. And we really need to encourage and increase that pool of employment opportunities, because I've had some tremendous successes also. Thank you.
Levon, I want you to tell them about your most recent appointment to the National Committee.
Oh, yes. I attended a conference this weekend of the Coalition of Juvenile Justice, and I was appointed to the Regional Committee as the Midwestern Representative for the DMC Disproportion Minority Contact Committee, and so very pleased and honored to serve in that position for two years.
Well, congratulations with that and also congratulations on your success of reentering because you've done a phenomenal job, not only for you and your family, but for the people that you're serving in Douglas County. And so we really, really do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Levon, thank you. And also, you know, I want to say, Mary Ann, that was nice, your comment toward Mary Ann and what she did on that quietly, and it's meaningful and that's great.
Thanks, Levon. With that, we do have another resolution. Or Mark, did you want to come down? I forgot I had you come over. Just so everybody can be kind of updated on what some of the efforts are, Levon is one perfect example. Mark, do you want to give us a little briefing of what we're doing for reentry?
Yes. What time of day it is? Good morning. Director Mark Foxall, Director Foxall, Douglas County Corrections. I just want to take the opportunity to put some emphasis behind the resolution today, at least from the perspective of the Department of Corrections. We are by nature a short-term facility. For example, we will intake or book approximately 1,500 people a month, and we will release approximately 1,500 people a month. So reentry is a critical component of what we do, not just for what goes on inside 1,452-bed jail facility, but also for the community at large. These individuals are coming back out into the community, friends and neighbors, acquaintances, family members, shopping with you, driving to and fro with you. So it's incumbent upon us to provide as many resources as we can for a successful return for these individuals. And some of the networking that we've done or the partnerships, and one of the most recent partnerships is with Levon, with Reconnect. And I believe in conversation with Levon, one of the class meetings that I stood in on for a little bit, there were, I believe, eight people since inception that have found jobs since they've left our facility. That's crucial. That's crucial, because if you don't have an opportunity or the resources or the wherewithal to seek gainful employment, stay employed, then it increases the likelihood that you're going to have a return visit to us. And I want to thank Levon for the services that you've provided. And it's not just Levon, though. We have a host of services at our facility, and it includes, you know, Life Skills from Nebraska has been there for years. Reconnect, obviously, talking to that point with respect to what Levon has been able to do. Metropolitan Community College has come in to assist us. We have GED testing onsite. We have Corrections Network onsite, which is basically closed-circuit TV, pushing out educational opportunities. We have a literacy center onsite. We have Heartland Family Services onsite. The Veterans Services that we've talked about in recent board meetings has really come full circle for us to provide opportunities. And I'd want to read quickly, it's a little note that I had from the individual in our Veterans Housing Unit, it says, "Mr. Foxall, I'm a veteran of your best pod and have been for the last several months. The pod has helped and done more for me than any other time that I can remember. With the contacts and the programs that I've been a part of since I've been here, it's really going to help me when I am released." That says it all right there. You have someone who's incarcerated, who has taken full advantage of the opportunities, the reentry opportunities that we have provided, and to push out a note to say, hey, thank you, taking full advantage of it, and nothing to gain other than, hey, realize that this is an opportunity, I've seized the opportunity, and I'm going to try to do well upon release. He follows up this note and says he's, has another obligation in another facility, but he wants to stay with us to complete that time as well. So if somebody wants to stay in my place, it's a little bit unusual to hear, but you know what? That's a good thing, and it means that we're going in the right direction. You know, we've not solved all of the problems. We have to deal with issues of capacity, but I think we're well on the right track. I think it's, the board has been very helpful, and I couldn't do this all by myself, I can't do it with the resources that we have. It's truly a partnership with all of the staff that we have there at Corrections, the board, the VA, for example, the providers in the community, and the willingness that people have to have a heart to do this, too. Think about the two officers that we have working up and the multiple officers that we have working up in the Veterans Housing Unit, and they really and truly believe in this idea of reentry. And it's not just lip service, or it's not just, okay, it's going to be reentry week, you know, April 24th. Folks, for us, it's reentry week all year long. And that's the attitude that we approach with respect to preparing people to return to the community. So I thank the board, I thank the folks in the community that have partnered with us to provide the resources that are necessary. And I want to say one more thing, too, the homeless population as well. We're about 275, 280 homeless people in our facility, too. And guess what? They're coming back out, too. So the resources that we provide to prepare them for return to the community are critical as well. So I didn't want to leave that point out. So again, I thank you for what you've been able to do. I thank Levon, you know, you're the provider this year, so on behalf of all the providers, I'm going to thank you for what you've done, and thank you to all the providers as well.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I have to comment in listening to the words that have been spoken in the last ten minutes or so. I think this just shows how committed all of us in Douglas County are to the well-being of our fellow citizens. It speaks to the kind of community that we are, and this board, while we have our party labels that separate us, but we act- labels that separate us, but we act, we act as one on the important issues, and even frankly, on the unimportant ones. But we do work together for the betterment of the community, and we have terrific programs brought to us like Ms. Dennis did. And then we have a Director of Corrections, who is an incredible person, and his staff is just committed to the well-being of people. That just makes a huge difference for our community, and I couldn't let this moment go by without saying that.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Morgan?
Well, I'm echoing a bit of what Commissioner Boyle said, but, Mark, we don't say it often enough, but truthfully, we really appreciate you and your team. I mean, when you really think about fifteen hundred admittances and fifteen hundred releases a month, and the task that you have and the challenges you have, and your compassion in always trying to do the right thing, John and the rest of your team, I for my, I think can speak for the entire board, we are so appreciative to have you here. I'd say one other thing, dear, I was lucky enough to meet your father when I was mayor right at the beginning of my term, Pittman Foxall. And I made the decision on the spot that he was the guy to be Public Safety Director, and you had some pretty big shoes to fill. You've come very close to filling it. And he was with me my entire time, and also your mother, who we're going to have breakfast with soon, they can be very proud of you and the job you're doing, and most importantly, your compassion toward others and the respect you always showed toward everyone. I really admire you. Most sincerely.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Should we do a resolution to raise the salary now? There's no which one we say?
No. Part of my deal was to reduce it five percent.
Sorry, Mark.
We do have one more resolution today. Resolution declaring April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, is moving the dial on disproportionate minority contact day in Douglas County, and this is brought to us by Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It reads, "Whereas federal law through the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Act requires communities to develop and implement plans to reduce the disproportionate number of juvenile minorities who come in contact with the juvenile justice system, termed as disproportionate minority contact, or DMC. And whereas nationwide, the purpose of DMC committees are to seek equal and fair treatment for every youth in the juvenile justice system. And whereas the Douglas County DMC Committee works collaboratively as a subcommittee of the Juvenile Detention Alternative, JDAI, coordinating council to review current data, identify any disproportionate issues, and implement strategies to reduce the number of juvenile minorities in the juvenile justice system. And whereas on April twenty-eighth, the Center for Children Law and Policy in Omaha will be conducting a training called Moving the Dial on DMC, designed to better develop and implement best practices and strategies to end the disproportionate representation of youth of color in our system. And whereas the Moving the Dial on DMC Training is an opportunity for leaders of the Douglas County Juvenile Justice System to learn from leading experts about the potential causes of DMC, as well as gaining an understanding of effective strategies that our community can use. And whereas Douglas County welcomes the Center for Children's Law and Policy in Omaha to facilitate this important training for Douglas County and the City of Omaha's staff, now therefore be resolved by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, this board hereby declares April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, as Moving the Dial on DMC Day in Douglas County, and encourages all staff and community leaders to participate and to continue to learn more on how to implement strategies that our community can utilize to end DMC, and I would move that approval."
So, second?
Motion by Rogers, seconded by Kraft. Please vote.
Madam Chair, if I can say, the two co-chairs are here, I'd like to invite them if they would like to say anything, but before they come up, let me say that, you know, probably pulled the six or seven year after that we've been working on JDAI and the whole juvenile detention effort, there's three things that have been popping their heads up. One has been the issue that we've had with runners. One is an issue with kids coming in the system with warrants, and DMC has been the third. And we've been trying to work our way through those issues. I think next year, this year, in a budget physically year, you will see a lot of emphasis on that. I want to credit that to the co-chairs and their kind of realignment and direction with the committee. You know, right now, we have some, I think, lows that I haven't seen since I've been here, and if everything goes to task, and they have said this is the first phase, they're going to have a lot of the leadership in first-line individuals getting this training with their hope to put this in the community at a later stage. If this goes to plan and we're able to really make a dent on DMC, we could see numbers, I think realistically, like in the twenties, in that detention center, which would be some of the best news that I could ever say. So, with that, I'd like to invite either one of them up, they'd like to say some words.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mark LaFleur, Manager of Administrative Services at Douglas County Youth Center and Co-Chair of the Disproportionate Minority Contact Committee. Commissioner Rogers really laid out the overall picture quite well. We still have a challenge in addressing DMC in Douglas County. Even as our numbers hit historic lows, we still see the percentage of minorities at a rather significant rate, which is just not a Douglas County concern, but it really is a national concern. But through the efforts of the JDAI, it's really given us a lot of different avenues to address the issues. And having this training really does give us the opportunity to get everyone on the same foot with regards to understanding DMC. And the intent is to have additional DMC trainings, one for the community, and the second for families, as well as system point holders. So, we're really looking at moving the dial overall, and this training really gives us the opportunity to do that. And we really appreciate the resolution and the support from Commissioner Rogers and through JDAI. And all of you have really just been remarkable in assisting, and really just like to say thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Please.
And I'd just like to know, too, the city will be doing concurrent resolution today at the city council meeting to emphasize it, so note that. Thank you, Omaha.
Commissioner Kraft?
Mark, what is the average population for the past month, or today, or whatever numbers you have?
We've been sitting just around seventy-two total for the month, and that includes secure and staff secure. We see numbers for detention in the low fifties, and as Commissioner Rogers alluded, we're very fortunate to see numbers that low. And if you don't mind me just taking an aside, part of that is partly due to having a variety of different programs and activities come through and be a part of what we do at the youth center. And one of those initially, partly was the triage program through Reconnect, Inc. And they've really just, they've come in and they've met kids while they were there, and really just helped work with kids even after they left the facility. And we're very proud to see two or three of the young people who started with triage, now Reconnect, Inc., actually graduating, coming up. So, it's, you know, it's great to see that Douglas County supports what happens, certainly at the adult corrections. At the youth center, we had about twelve hundred youth that came through our facility last year, so we're not dealing with the numbers. But a big part of our emphasis is making sure that young people don't come back, because anyone could make a mistake and end there. But we try to immerse them with enough services that they can see themselves in a different area and on a different path, and that really does help. A lot of that has to do with the support that we receive from this board.
Thank you.
No other lights? Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
We have one presentation we're going to do, and that is a presentation by the Omaha Performing Arts. It's their tenth anniversary update, and Joan Squire.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. Want to start, though, by thanking the Commissioners for your wonderful support of Omaha Performing Arts for this first decade through the Visitor Improvement Fund. Your support's allowed us to present wonderful performances to the community and the county, and also to invest in particularly the Orpheum Theater over the years. What I want to do today, and actually with me is Sabrina Weiss, our Vice President for Development, we're concluding the tenth anniversary of the Holland Center and of Omaha Performing Arts. And I thought I would start today with a brief video that we prepared to celebrate the tenth anniversary, and then give you a bit of an update about where we're heading for the institution. So, if I can start with that, I think I can get that started.
You can see it in the eyes of her, and him, and them. They are the reason we're celebrating our success, but more importantly, our future.
Omaha Performing Arts led to changing the entire art scene in Omaha. It's made, given people the opportunity to appreciate something that's better. This is in Omaha, looking forward.
Omaha Performing Arts celebrates ten amazing years. Ten years of entertainment, ten years of inspiration, ten years of education, ten years of engaging this community.
Our original vision for Omaha Performing Arts was to bring in great performances and take care of the buildings, but it's become so much more than that. Now, we have one of the best Broadway series you could imagine at the Orpheum, wonderful dance companies, family, jazz, popular entertainers, comedians, speakers, and more. So, we've really had a chance to open up and to augment the wonderful groups that are here by bringing in these great artists.
With any civic or charitable organization, the success of it is how much your community is involved in it.
There is a mission to provide greater education and music for children. I think that's important to the whole community.
We presented fresh and, I think, extraordinary Broadway shows for long runs, which we never had before.
The diversity of the programming that we're able to provide, and the high quality of the entertainment that we're able to bring in. We had very optimistic expectations, and we've exceeded those.
We wanted people, when they drove by or walking into the mall, to be able to look inside the building and see people moving around and think to themselves, "I haven't been there before, but I want to go inside that building. I want to be part of Omaha Performing Arts."
Every step of our journey, we've been there to engage the community, providing the facilities and support to inspire and educate a new generation.
I think it's very, very important to have something as good, as well put together, as Omaha Performing Arts.
The talent that comes to Omaha with these awesome shows is just amazing.
And I love the variety that it's brought to Omaha.
I mean, from the opera to Motown.
I also think Jazz on the Green is one of the coolest things that they have given the community.
And this center provides a place here in Omaha for students to come and learn, to take master classes, to experience what professional theater is all about, what it can be, what it can achieve.
And we make the time to send the kids so that they can see something that they ordinarily would never, ever get to see.
To expose them to the arts and expand their experiences. I believe it will brighten their future.
And it's right here in our backyard. It's just a blessing to be able to go down there, to feel all of that and be part of it.
We touch the lives of young and old by attracting world-class talent that have graced our phenomenal venues season after season.
The Holland Performing Arts Center is gorgeous.
It is acoustically perfect, a really tremendous facility from that standpoint.
Anytime I walk into the Holland Center, I just feel creative. There's a level of energy that is in that room that makes me creative.
The Holland Performing Arts Center is a remarkable home for the Omaha Symphony. It is a truly world-class place to perform.
The way everything sounds, it just blends together so nicely, and the stage is fantastic. It's so big and open.
And I like the Twelve Hundred Club because it's kind of intimate. You know, it kind of reminds you of maybe a fifties, sixties kind of jazz club. You know, you might catch me doing the beatnik thing here.
Well, the Holland Center is just so conducive to what we do. The girls not only are able to see, you know, the rock and roll world, but they're also able to see the professional world of music and how that's in operation.
It's been fun to come here and see people in the building who have never been here before and have never been exposed to the performing arts, to really say, "Wow, this is a great place to be."
We're making full use of the facility for all ages and all things. It's good, that's what we want.
It's state-of-the-art, especially the Holland Center. But the Orpheum incorporates so much history, and you can just feel the passion of past performances.
The Orpheum is, well, obviously, it's an Omaha landmark. My students never cease to rave about how gorgeous it is when we go in.
A true theater, like you walk in and it takes your breath away.
I guess my favorite part is coming in and just taking in the atmosphere of sitting in something so beautiful. I guess that's the only word I can, way I can describe that.
It's beautiful.
It reminds me of the old Paramount days, majestic.
Just knowing the other people who have performed in the space, it's kind of cool to know whose footsteps you're following.
The Orpheum really is the home of the opera. Our patrons love coming to this theater. They love the look of it, they love the feel of it, and as an opera company, we certainly love producing in the Orpheum.
It's inspiring to me. I mean, I go in there, and I still get chills.
Exceptional performances, enriching the community. This journey has been incredible, and we're just getting started.
We're excited about the next decade, and I think this is a chance to sort of use as a launch as we go forward. You know, we focused on making sure our buildings continue to be well-maintained and well-taken care of, that we offer great patron amenities, and most importantly, bring in the wonderful artists that have graced our stages.
I don't know of anything I have done that satisfies me more, because we made a difference for the happiness of people in the town, and we opened the door to new feelings of, you know, all kinds of beauty.
Happy tenth anniversary.
Happy tenth anniversary.
Happy tenth anniversary, Omaha Performing Arts.
Can't wait for the next ten years.
I want to wish you a happy birthday and many more to come.
Happy anniversary.
Happy tenth anniversary.
Happy anniversary, Omaha Performing Arts.
Looking forward to the next ten years.
Happy birthday.
Happy tenth anniversary, Omaha Performing Arts.
Looking forward to another great ten years together.
Happy tenth anniversary.
Happy tenth anniversary, Omaha Performing Arts, from the Salem Baptist Church.
Happy tenth anniversary, Omaha Performing Arts.
Can't wait for the next ten years.
I just want to thank everybody who has been part of the success and will be part of our future.
It's been an extraordinary journey over the ten years, and I just have a very brief PowerPoint just to talk a little bit about the future and to let you know where we're headed. Pull this out a little bit. There you go. As we look and we saw in the video, the vision is really a vibrant destination for these extraordinary experiences to engage, inspire, and connect. With our mission is threefold, with these wonderful artists, the stewardship of the facilities, and the education and community engagement programs. I think most of you are aware that we also operate, own and operate Ticket Omaha to make a one-stop shop for tickets in Omaha, patron-friendly. We just upgraded, in fact, our entire website and interaction so we can be on mobile devices, and we serve these organizations that are in our facilities and actually beyond. Our board, I think you are familiar with as well, and our administration, they've been long-serving, and they have just been behind the scenes, really stewarding all of the progress that we've made. The statistics, I think, are also impressive, and I continue to want to mention those, that these first ten years, three million people have been through there. And then I wonder why we had to replace the carpet early. So, it's been an amazing amount of folks through both facilities over these years. And something that I think is not always recognized is it's a forty-million-dollar annual economic impact. The jobs have been over ninety-two million, but it's nine-point-two million, I'm sorry, annually, but with forty million with the visitors and the folks that come in. And then particularly, as we look at who's coming to our performances, forty-nine percent are actually outside of Douglas County, and eighteen percent of those are from outside the state of Nebraska. So, we really are a significant draw to the community and to Douglas County of the people that are participating in these performances. We've won a number of recent awards. We were ranked number fifty worldwide in venues of all sizes by Pollstar. And by similar venues in size, we were number seventh for the Holland and number thirteenth for the Orpheum by Venues Today. And then in the Midwest, we're number two. So, from zero to those rankings, we're quite proud of the progress of the ticket sales and grateful to the folks who have purchased those tickets. So, we do about three hundred or more events. So we do about 300 or more events per year and 220,000 are, have been served through our education engagement events. Jasmine the Green is again, you saw in the video. Uh, I love this series, uh, 50, I think that's even low. We've been up to about 60,000 now annually, uh, for those free performances, bringing all parts of the community together at, at Midtown Crossing and Turner Park. And our patron amenities, uh, we continue to enhance with, uh, food service, catering, uh, numerous events over the year. Our restaurant and our bar and lounge have become quite popular, and then even for weddings and corporate meetings. So our season preview, um, we've got, I think, a wonderful season, uh, lots of, lots of ticket sales. Uh, let me know if I can help anybody with tickets. Uh, Family Opera's there right now, but, uh, from Beautiful to Carol King Musical to The Sound of Music and White Christmas, uh, wonderful Broadway shows coming up, and Return of Jersey Boys and Rent. And then we do, uh, basically five major series, uh, from jazz, these are just highlights with, uh, Jazz at Lincoln Center with Wynton Marsalis. Um, Chris Bode will return the trumpeter on our Showcase Series. Uh, the Carol Endorfman Dance Company, and we're going to, uh, work with the Institute for Holocaust Education, uh, to, to work on their production this year. We partner with a lot of social service agencies. Our family series, Black Violin was here for 1200 Club about a year ago, and they did a student matinee and the kids just went crazy over it. So we're bringing them back, uh, to the main hall. And the National Geographic Live, where we bring a series of speakers, uh, that, that are videographers, videographers and photojournalists to come through. Uh, this one's apropos with Chasing Rivers, um, with Pete McBride. And then specials, um, Elvis Lives, or Three Elvies, I call them, um, will be on that performance. Uh, and Taj Express, which is a Bollywood show. Uh, Chris Mann, who is currently on, in Phantom of the Opera and It's a Phantom, will be in the 1200 Club. David Benoit with Smooth Jazz, and, and there's so much more. I'm just touching on some of the series. Because I particularly want to just mention now the, the education community engagement, which is our real focus going forward. We have, over the years, offered student matinees where you see the buses lined up around the buildings and free master classes and workshops. But we are really focused now on four national partnerships we're bringing to our community. First, Jazz at Lincoln Center is bringing in an early, uh, childhood jazz education program for children ages 3 to 5. Uh, and that's, uh, one of just a few partnerships they're doing in the country, also in Chicago and, uh, St. Louis, uh, and also now in Omaha. Disney has asked us to partner with them for musicals in schools, um, for sustainable musical theater and the education, uh, elementary schools and urban schools for grades 3 to 5. So you have basically Junior Lion Kings and, uh, Beauty and the Beast. Carnegie Hall is, uh, working with us directly, uh, on elementary programs for grades K through 2. And the High School Theater Awards, where we're now taking to Greater Nebraska, and we're all about halfway through the state. So we've already, this year, got 5,000, over 5,000 students participating. We will be nationally, and then we choose two students to send to New York for that program. So it's been, uh, extraordinary progress. Uh, again, I want to, on behalf of my entire institution, express our support, our appreciation to Douglas County Commissioners and for all you've done to help us, uh, on this journey. And, uh, we look forward to the next decade, working together and beyond.
Well, thank you very much, Joan. Uh, the video is fantastic. You did a great job with it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The stats are pretty impressive too, so, um, we appreciate all you, you do and Sabrina does, and thanks for keeping us updated. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'd just like to say that your presentation was up to your high standards. Just terrific. Just terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We will now, um, I need a motion to recess out of the Board of Commissioners and go into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization.
So moved.
Please vote. Motion by Boyle, second by Duda.
Motion passes.
We will enter the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. I, we do need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Boyle, seconded by Kraft. That's our litigation? Litigation? Please vote.
We've been sued. What? Motion passes.
Time for a diapasty. You know?
Gotta stay away.
Yep. Why did you do that?
I, I don't. Oh, I know, yeah. My mom watched it. Oh, I sure did. Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, I just don't ever watch those. I mean. Yeah. I've seen a ton of like clips.
Are you British?
I'm from Britain. Better company. I don't, I don't. I, I have friends that do. But they, yeah.
Oh, sure, sure, I wondered. I wondered if that was.
Or you could have been asking it.
No, I didn't, I didn't.
Glad you're finally starting to realize that. Yeah, I think the. I wouldn't want anything done.
Yeah, you don't have an opponent, do you?
I don't. Living right, I guess.
Yeah, well, you're doing a good job, so just keep me posted if you think we need to hear anything.
Sure. Well, I guess I know again, getting the ten most of the budget.
Yeah. They had an early one today, I got there at eight o'clock. Talking about the bond issue.
I don't think we're up by offices until we're seventy or something. Essentially, say a flat budget, that's forty-two dollars less than theirs.
Oh, good. And that's what we like to hear. Well, they plan on doing some things strategically, like instituting zero-based budget, which I think is a good idea. Again, another thing I wish they'd fixed, since we discussed. The departments who come in under budget, which is good. When they take the money, they save it to give to departments who overspend. And that's, that's not good, because you don't give the departments who save money incentives. The departments who overspend, they say, well, you know, we've been overspending every year, we'll just take the money from the departments who save money.
Yeah, no, you're right. At least once or twice a year, it seems, you know?
Yeah, and they, they take money from any budget out. Get to another, the sheriff's office. Then they get, they get in bad situations too. Feds cut off their money from the seizures, so they had a budget for it, and they didn't get the money. So they have to get it from somewhere, so sometimes you can't help it, and there's unfunded state mandates. They moved all probation offices here, so now county has to pay for all the expenses there. That's not fair. Well, your department's always done, Tom did a very good job, and you're doing a good job too, so.
I'll try to keep it up.
Yeah, just keep me posted on anything you think we ought to hear about.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I, somebody's trying to get their property off the tax rolls, I see that. Yeah. Yeah, see, Nebraska does not have a concrete law on tax exemptions for property. Other states do. Now, what's gonna happen is the women of the world, they took them off the tax rolls, and now everybody who's got an insurance company and they give something away, they're gonna want, take their property off the tax rolls. And then you have these hospitals who compete with private gyms and fitness centers and aerobics and everything else. They want their spaces taken off the tax rolls. That, that's no good, 'cause it just puts a load on everybody else. Yeah, lobbyists, yeah. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, I'll keep you posted.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I would. Sometimes people do. And I'm like, you people are crazy, I'm sorry. I'm a bit brave.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Um, I do, yeah. Um, I haven't done a lot today. Presentation. I've gotta move everything around. Yeah, I still, still have a lot of meeting left, yeah. Yeah, good to see you. Oh, yeah, I, you know, I probably wouldn't have even looked. All right, good to see you too. Yeah. Wait, so. No. I. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What?
Sign away.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know what? Yeah. I have an idea.
Yeah, yeah, I think I...
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to reconvene, um, in continued Board of Equalization?
Second.
Motion by Morgan, seconded by Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Um, item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 12, 2016, and item B, call for a meeting set Tuesday, May 3, 2016, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Motion by Duda, seconded by Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have, um, Resolutions D through G. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Motion by Duda, seconded by Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes.
And we do have a protest, a protest, um, item H, of intent to tax property owned by University of Nebraska Board of Regents at 6825 Pine Street. There are three parcels. Uh, Mr. Goodwilly?
Yes, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds Office. Um, these are three parcels owned by the university, or three suites owned by the University of Nebraska Board of Regents that have been being leased out in prior years to private entities, thus making them taxable. Um, the university has not always been particularly prompt with providing us information about what they're leasing out and what they aren't. What we have subsequently learned is that these, these three parcels stopped being leased out for a private purpose, uh, prior to January 1 of this year. We did not know it when we sent out our notice of intent to tax. They have so, we have subsequently learned it, but we've also learned about five other suites that are going to be leased out and put, and put on the tax rules for 2016. So if you wish, you can grant this one. It isn't hurt any, gonna hurt anything. We're gonna take these three parcels off and put them on the governmental exempt list anyhow. Um, we have settled the case and the attorney for the university was going to contact Catherine Hall to remove it from the agenda, but apparently that didn't happen.
All right, is there a motion to approve? Uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyle?
Uh, I have a, a question, Mr. Goodwilly. Do we treat, um, individual taxpayers, um, the same way where we can go back, uh, back to January and, uh, give them exemptions and, or treat them differently, or change the valuations? Do we treat, uh, individuals the same way?
Well...
Like, for example, on a homestead exemption application, do we treat them the same way?
I'm, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not tracking.
Oh, the answer is just no. That's okay. Thanks.
Well, I'm not sure that's quite right, but...
Commissioner Duda?
Uh, it's certainly interesting to have challenges with a state entity complying with state law. Uh, I mean, but my question is, what about these five, five suites that you have learned aren't being leased?
We are developing value and will bring it to you for approval at an upcoming meeting.
So, gonna, I mean...
So they'll be taxable, yes.
That's your, very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
So these suites are located in, is, is it the Exarban Village portion of the campus?
It's, it's the tech center. I don't have the address in front of me. I wanna say it's like 6825 Pine or something, 6810 Pine.
So, they have valuations of nine hundred and eighteen thousand, and one of them is valued over a million dollars. That's for the suite itself?
For the, yes.
Okay. Um, have you been in these suites?
They're very nice.
(laughing).
It's, it's very nice space.
Are they like a condo or something?
Yeah.
Okay. And, university, the regents, do leases with, what kind of entities are they leased to?
Um, the five that we've, they're private business entities, the five that we've gotten in that are gonna, the suites that are gonna come back on the tax rules. Uh, if memory serves, Cabela's is one. Uh, there's another firm that sells medical supplies and equipment. Uh, I'm not thinking of the names off the top of my head, but yeah, they're, they're private businesses using those suites for non-public purposes.
Okay. And, um, in the past, in order to gauge valuation, I guess, uh, they provided us with lease documents?
Yes.
And so, the actual rental agreements are available as public records?
Yes.
Oh, right. Um, and these particular suites, these million dollar suites, are currently vacant? Is that right?
Um, they are either, they're either vacant or in the process of the university converting them to some sort of a, a use that would meet the public purpose requirement, yeah.
How many are there?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you the exact number.
More than these three, though?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
No further questions? So, really, we just have this protest. Um, I guess I look at legal to what, motion or no motion, or what do we need to do with these parcels?
Tracy Yurt County Attorney's Office. Um, I think that the, if I'm reading the regents' request appropriately, they're, they're protesting, um, so you'd wanna grant the protest, but I also understand from Mr. Goodwilly that it's gonna be moot because they are going to go ahead and take them back off the rules as well, so...
The, the only difference would be if you grant the protest today, then we don't have to put them on the government exempt list for your approval later. Essentially, you would be taking them off today.
So either we'll achieve the desired action, but one will do it today and one will do it later.
Okay. So what's the will of the board?
I'll second Commissioner Rogers.
Okay. Motion by Rogers, seconded by Duda. Please vote. Oh, did that include it, uh, to, not quick enough. Sorry, sorry. Motion by Rogers, seconded by Duda, to adjourn. Please vote.
Just one moment, please.
Yeah, now this one's adjourned.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle? There we go. Motion passes.
Grant the protest.
The exemptions.
We will now reconvene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 12, 2016, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, April 6, April 26, 2016.
Still move. Seconds.
Motion by Morgan, seconded by Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes.
We will move to the consent agenda, items A through K. No questions or comments? Motion by Duda, seconded by Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioner, Madam Chair, Jim Torville, Administrator at the Health Center.
Good morning.
And, uh, back in February, Mr. Marty Holstein, who was the widow of, of, widower, I should say, of, of a lady who was in our care, uh, came before the Board of Trustees at the Health Center and expressed his, his, uh, appreciation to, to the board for the care that his wife received, and he, he was at, at that time told by the, by the board to come down here and to share that with you as well. So I have Marty Holstein with me today, and he'd like to take a few moments to share what his experience was in the care that his wife received. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. I recognize the majority of you, and I'm glad to be back. Thank you. Uh, I know the time is short. I'll try to focus on what I need to. Uh, Douglas County, uh, was very important to my wife. Um, it meant a lot to her. Uh, I, at first, I couldn't figure out why, but then, when she got sick, she was adamant she wanted to be at Douglas County. After being there with her, after watching the care she received, and the compassion and the caring, I totally understand why she was so adamant of Douglas County Hospital. Uh, her significant other passed away there prior to Jan and I being married, and Jan went every day and stayed with him, and I think that convinced her, back in the eighties, why it was such a good place. Well, I think you've improved it a lot. I think it's got a lot more improvement needing because it's a wonderful institution, and I pray to God that you take care of that place, you take care of everybody that works there, and that you leave it there so it's accessible, accessible to individuals as time goes on. I want you to see this. This is Jan. This is not about me. And this picture, it's not Jan. It could be you, it could be your loved ones, it could be anybody, but someday, you're gonna need Douglas County. And if you don't take care of it, it won't be there. And, um, she received, in my opinion, I'm an RN, and I've been RN for forty-two years, and in my opinion, the care she received there was outstanding. It was top-notch. Um, of course, she always had some things that I would complain about, and you can always find skeletons in the closet if you look, and you can find dirt anywhere, but the bottom line is, that's the cleanest place I've ever seen, and that's not just because I say it's clean, it's clean. You got a wonderful institution, it, but it's wonderful because of the people there. And it's because of the compassion, the caring. And Jan wanted me to be sure that you maintain that beauty and keep it going. So, um, take care of it. And as I said earlier, as a taxpayer, I am going to be watching because I pay taxes along with everybody else, and whoever's can be in this picture, they'll be paying taxes. And I want to see that place nurtured. I want to see it grow, and I want to see it protect the Jans. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Marty, uh, thank you so much for coming down. I know I requested that at the board meeting because often, we hear about, kinda the other kind of view, and I thought it's important for the public to know that we make some hard decisions sometimes about do, trying to do the right thing, not always approve, but your validation of the kind of services provided at the Health Center. We heard from Mark Foxall, who does a tremendous job. I mean, that's what, we're here to try to make certain happens, and it's great for you to take the time, and, uh, I thank you for appearing in your statement.
You have a wonderful institution there, but it's wonderful because of the people. And I promised Jan I would make sure that you know that. And, uh, you protect those people, you protect the, what Douglas County stands for, and it'll be available for many years for, for Jan, so it's gonna come through this picture. And unfortunately, there will be Jans in this picture. We didn't get to choose, she didn't get to choose, but I could go home at night and I could sleep, and none of the, the choose okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Marty, thank you. I know this is hard on you, but you're right. We have a wonderful facility, even as old as it is. It's a wonderful facility, and we have wonderful staff, and we try to do that in all our departments. So thank you very much for reaffirming that.
Age has got nothing, I'd like to think age, I'm, uh, I'm getting up there. I'd like to think I still got youth. So, the age doesn't matter. It's what you put into that. And you've got a lot of good stuff in there.
That's right. That's right.
Commissioner Duda?
Mr. Torville, I wanted to thank you.
Also, and your staff, just so you know. I didn't get to finish that part.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. This reinforces what I have felt for twenty years, that Douglas County Health Center is a marvelous asset for our community, and it is something that everyone in the county should be very, very proud of. Thank you so much. We're sharing you.
And they should, they should have access. Every one of us should have access to the facility and that compassion and caring. And, uh, I appreciate people like you because I think you're gonna keep it there. I know you will, and, uh, there's gonna be lots and lots of people who need you and need that institution, 'cause, uh, we're not getting any younger.
Thank you. Thank you again for being here.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. We will, uh, we have one presentation, State of Douglas County Public Health, presented by Dr. Adi Pour, our Douglas County Health Director. And, um, as you know, Commissioner Rogers and I bring this to you each time, and we'll have some comments and discussion after Adi's presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Wow, this is all anew. I may need your help, guys. I'll slideshow. Yeah, here we go. Okay, so, uh, good morning, Board, Board of Commissioners. Uh, as I do every year, I'm gonna present to you a very, a snapshot what the health of, uh, the state of public health is in Douglas County. And usually, the, you would appreciate, it's fifty slides, and I put it together to twenty, so you're only gonna see a few of them. Um, usually, I show you all the infectious diseases that we are following, but what I want to focus this year is really only what are the outbreaks that we see in the community. And what you are seeing here, actually, this is all, of course, 2015 data. You see the many different outbreaks that we have had, and the outbreaks altogether actually are making up two hundred and sixty in ill individuals, plus we prophylax seven hundred and thirty individuals. But you see influenza outbreaks, eleven of them, ten of them in assisted living, uh, facilities, cryptosporidium in the community, we had seventy-one individuals who came down with cryptosporidium last summer, never really were able to find what the source of the outbreak was. Lot of, uh, norovirus outbreaks in childcare, wedding reception, pertussis outbreaks. And then, of course, remember last year at this time, we still had Ebola, high-risk Ebola individuals who came to this community to be monitored and being close to the biocontainment unit. We had a measles outbreak where the individuals were really non-residents, but they were actually identified by, by being in one of our clinics in Douglas County, and therefore it meant a whole lot of communication around that. Highly pathogenic avian influenza, this was the poultry outbreak in northeast Nebraska, where we were helping that community to get their hands around it, and that's what public health, local public health does. We have a system across the state, so if one local, uh, health department needs help, usually, they come to us first because they know we have, uh, probably one of the more sophisticated staff. But these are the priorities for the Douglas County Health Department, and you know them and you remember them. Now, they are gonna change for 2016, and so I'm gonna talk about the change here for asthma, I'm gonna talk about the change for the ACEs, and then we are gonna talk about changes in this one, eliminating or reducing health disparities. So these were the priorities that we had for 2015, starting out with the first slide with asthma. And remember, we always... And remember, we always talked about asthma being a priority because we had a large health disparity. And what you are seeing in this slide, what an effort has been done in our community for many different partners. Never let me say this is from the Health Department. It is not. It is schools who work, school-based clinics, who had a lot of work to do around this. This is people taking their asthma medication, following their asthma plan. And what you are seeing now is that the disparity is close to zero, meaning white population and minority population are at the same risk of asthma. And therefore, I'm happy to say the Board of Health has agreed with me to take asthma off as a Health Department priority. Infant mortality is a little bit the same thing. I always say infant mortality is a sign of the health of a community. If you can't take care of the youngest one, how can you take care of more difficult issue? And it also talks about the healthcare system in a community. But we used to have huge health disparities in regards to infant mortality. When I first started to work at the Health Department, I always used to say, a child who is born to an African-American mom has a three-fold higher chance not to celebrate their first birthday compared to a white infant. Now, what we are seeing, we have really tried to close the gap. Doesn't mean that we don't have infant mortality occurring, and we still see African-American babies dying at a higher rate than whites. But the gap has closed, and that's what we wanted to show. So infant mortality remains a priority. STD, of course, is still a priority, and this is a very disappointing slide for me, I have to say. And it is the only slide I always say to staff, you show me that slide first when you prepare the data because every January, February, I'm holding my breath and I'm saying, I hope we are going to make a dent in regards to the rate of chlamydia. And every year, I see the rate is now the highest that it has ever been in our community. And now this year, I'm going to say, we have also treated the most number of individuals with chlamydia in our community because, as you know, these are often asymptomatic infections. And we have made a great effort through the Adolescent Health Project to have more clinic operation sites out there. We have expanded our hours into evenings, so we are really making ourselves the testing available. But it's still, my hope is that we are going to see that testing, that positivity rate decreasing. The same is in gonorrhea. We saw an increase last year in our gonorrhea rate. Now, I want to bring you to this slide. So this is chlamydia, three-thousand-five-hundred-and-seven cases in Douglas County overall. More than two-thousand of those cases are in the fifteen-to-twenty-four-year age group. That is the age group that we have focused on. That's the age group that the Adolescent Health Project focuses on. This slide is a little bit positive for me. The cup is half-full, I would say. Because what you are seeing here is, when you look at those age ranges, the red one, fifteen-to-nine-year-olds, we saw a slight decrease in that age range. The same we are seeing in the twenty-to-twenty-four-year-old, we see a decrease in that age range. So my hope is that all the outreach and the education that is going on in our community is starting to have an effect on that age groups, which is different from the older age groups. But these are the age groups that I am most concerned about. They are the age groups who are our next generation. They are the next families, and what we are finding is that, you know, pelvic inflammatory disease, infertility is still an issue that especially these young individuals, I'm very concerned about. And therefore, the more we are able to treat and the more education we are going to be able to provide. The next year, the Adolescent Health Project just awarded us the second-year grant. The effort is going to be more on educating parents. Because what we are hearing is that often, parents say, we really don't know how to talk to our young people. We need the tools to do that because we know the best discussion occurs around the family table and around the dinner table. And that's where the discussion should occur. And so therefore, in this coming year, the effort is really around those, education. And what we are finding is, like with the young people, when we were saying, where is education being held the best? They say, where we already are. Parents are telling us the same thing. You better come to us where we already are in groups together and then provide us that information. Don't call us out at night to come to an extra meeting again because we won't have time to do that. So we are going to places where our parents are already meeting. Syphilis rate, this is just a slide. I actually thought I took this out. But what we are seeing is our syphilis rate, we are very much close to what the nation is seeing. Fortunately, it's not widespread. It's in a population. It is very specific. It's in homosexual population here in Douglas County, and that's what you also see internationally. Blood lead poisoning, childhood lead poisoning has always been a priority for us and will be and remain a priority for us for probably a few more years. But what you are seeing, what I'm really proud of our healthcare community is that we are still screening more than seventeen thousand children under the age of six. And what you are seeing there is actually our positivity rate. That means nine-point-five microgram per deciliter of lead in the blood of these children is decreasing. And so we are seeing there the opposite of what we are seeing with chlamydia. Chlamydia, we are testing more. We are seeing the rate go up. In lead poisoning, we are testing more for blood lead levels, and we are seeing actually the percentages go down. However, we still have a certain area of the community where we have an old housing stock and where we have the exposure from old industrial sites that are still remaining. And these are, the blue areas is the zip code areas where we have children with elevated blood lead levels in 2015. New children, thirty-five new children in this area. And as you know what that means, there is always a process that then occurs when those children are reported to us. There goes a letter out to the family to actually propose to them if they want to have a house inspection done, a risk assessment done, to identify what the potential sources in their homes are so they can start renovating and changing those sources. But what you see is, when you look at the housing stock in our community and you say, where are those houses? It is the oldest housing stock, nineteen-ten to nineteen-twenty-nine. But don't be misled. There are homes that are built after nineteen-seventy that still may have lead-based paint in them. So I think we always need to be careful, but our efforts really is towards the old housing stock. Lead-based paint in the old housing stock is the primary risk factor for children in our community. Obesity, this slide I left in here, seventeen ten adults are obese in Douglas County, and therefore, any efforts we can make in regards to nutrition and physical activity is beneficial. Here, we are starting to work very closely with WellCom, which works in wellness with all the private industries and really try to say, what can private industry do for us here in this community? Because with all their staff that they have, there is an interest, an economic interest to keep them healthy. So we have worked with four-hundred-and-thirty-eight Partners for Healthy City organizations to implement healthy policies, similar to the policy that you actually approved, the vending policy that you approved a few times ago. So we are hoping to move forward on that. We have up to now ten healthy neighborhood stores. Those are those smaller neighborhood stores where we have helped them get together, purchase in bulk, so it is cheaper for them. Also, helped them really display their fresh fruits and vegetables in a more appealing way, and they have really become very, very successful. It's a very, very nice story to tell for our community. And we have added twenty-three additional square miles of access to healthy food. And you will see that actually under the chip, too. What that means is, the NIMs assessment is an assessment where everybody should have a healthy neighborhood store within one mile of their home. And so this shows that we have added twenty-three additional square miles where individuals have access to fresh fruits and vegetables in our community. Two organizations implemented diabetes prevention programs. And we have two new health impact assessments that we completed. One around Deer Park and one to talk about when neighborhoods are developing additional areas or so how important it is that neighborhoods are connected to places where they can go and shop, for example. That's important not only for the younger population, but it's really important for the elder population because they have problems with finding transportation or getting transportation. The adverse childhood experience, as we had that as a priority, the discussion have started in this community, especially with Project Harmony. They really are at the forefront in the connection projects where they are going into schools and will start implementing this program. The other program, I'll talk quickly under the chip, it's Project Extra Mile, who has developed a short assessment program. Public health emergency, I just wanted to point out one thing to you. You know, it always works in silence, and then when an emergency arises, that's when you bring out all those plans. And that's when you say, have you really practiced enough? So we did a tabletop exercise this summer, actually, with about eighty participants, over fifteen different agencies, to really try to work together and say, how do we work this? How do hospitals work? How do we really work together in emergency rooms? And do we know each other before the emergency actually occurs? And it has been very helpful, but a lot of work is going on there. I want to switch really quickly to the chip because I hear you talk about the chip, the Community Health Improvement Plan. Just for some of them in the audience who may not be aware of it, the Community Health Improvement Plan is a plan for the community, and it is a growth out of the Community Health Needs Assessment that is being done with all the hospitals together and the Health Department. And so there are four areas that were pointed out about three years ago, one of them, access to care. And the goal was to improve access to healthcare by five percent in northeast and southeast Omaha. That meant we looked at, that is actually based on the assessment, on asking people, do you have access to healthcare? And the outcome over the last three years now is that five percent have said, five percent more than previously have now access to healthcare in northeast Omaha, and one-point-five percent have access in southeast Omaha. So we have kind of gotten to what our goal was in that one, and we are even better when we look in regards to access to health insurance. As a community, we decided we wanted to increase health insurance coverage by two percent for our individuals. And across the county, we have a three-point-seven percent decrease in the uninsured rate. And so, again, a great success of the community working together as a community, making sure more people are actually enrolled in the process. Nutrition and physical activity, again, as I just mentioned before, one of the objectives was to increase the access to healthy food, measured by a five percent increase in the number of square miles. We have achieved twenty-three square miles. The other objective was to develop and adopt a complete streets policy. We have adopted a complete streets policy, and it was actually approved by the city council last spring. Now, I have to tell you, all these communities who develop complete street policies actually give it out to a national center and show the national center what the policy looks like. Our policy became number five out of eighty-two policies that were instituted last year. Kudos for the city of Omaha and Douglas County. We know we have a long ways to go with this, but it means it is a policy that is inclusive, that now developers, once guidelines have been developed, developers can develop in our community. That doesn't mean that every street is going to be a complete street, but it means that when streets are being, new streets are being built or streets are being renovated, there is a potential that we could have complete streets, which means not only the car is on those streets, but a bike could be on the streets, a mother with her baby carriage could be on the street, or somebody who just wants to walk could be on the street because the street would be safe enough for everyone. This one is increasing opportunities for adults, meaning parks, recreational areas. And we have seen a three percent increase of adults who are saying they have opportunities to do physical exercise. The next one is around violence, and it is red because we only have just started the discussion. We really haven't made a lot of progress yet. I'm happy to say, right now, we are writing a grant that would actually help us in this direction a little bit. But my hopes are not very high. There are only five awards who are given across the nation. But we will, for sure, give our hundred-and-ten percent to see that we could bring some resources into this community to address violence. Behavioral health, this is what I was talking about. A short health screening tool was developed and actually is now piloted by CHI. And the KIM Foundation, we have to thank, for a campaign that was developed to say that, you know, behavioral health is just like physical health. Don't distinguish between the two. And so then, the priorities for the Health Department for 2016 are obesity because we do have an issue. Childhood lead poisoning will remain STD, infant mortality. And we are calling, instead of ACEs, we are calling it trauma-informed care. As you may have heard, there is really some strong will in this community to become a trauma-informed community, which means that everyone in our community will kind of know what are the factors that lay behind and what are the importance of having a child who has seen adverse events, and that could be a divorce, that could be a lot of unhappiness in their family. How does that impact them later in life? And how, therefore, do we need to talk to them? And so those efforts will go forward, so that's why we put that trauma-informed care. But where I want to put your attention, we always had emergency preparedness, and we will keep that in. We are changing our terminology in regards to reducing health disparity. We are now going even a layer deeper, and we are saying, really, we need to look at the social determinants of health. They are the basic of where actually health comes out of. And by that, we mean we need to look at housing, meaning safe housing, healthy housing. We need to look at education, making sure that education encompasses everything. We need to look at the economics. We need to look at poverty. We need to look at social cohesiveness. So this is a new terminology that you will see us use in this community in very many different avenues. Having said that, I want to share three minutes with you on the county health rankings. And that's important because when we start to talk about social determinants of health. So you remember probably, seven year in a row now, the county health rankings have come out. It's a national effort from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation with the Wisconsin School of Public Health to actually look at a set of indicators across all the counties in the United States. But what comparison is, the comparison is really meant to look at one county compared to all the other counties in a state. So comparing Douglas County to Hoco County, to Antelope County, to Polk County, to all the counties in Nebraska. I want to show you the methodology that is used. This is the methodology. The method says, the top of it is, a measure of our health is the length of our life. So the longer we live, the better our health is and the better our health outcome is. But that is made up of different things. It's made up of policies. It's made up of health factors, and then that gets to health outcome. But look what it's made up. They give, and this is pretty scientifically done. It's a very good group who is putting this together, and scientists who have put this together for many years. They are giving the physical environment ten percent. So your health is the hundred percent. Physical environment has an importance of ten percent. The social determinants of health that I just talked to you about have an importance of forty percent in your health outcome. Clinical care has an importance of twenty percent in your health outcome, and my health outcome, too. Health behavior like tobacco use, diet, alcohol, sexual activity have contributed about thirty percent to your health outcome. So let's look. This is Nebraska. We all know how Nebraska looks like, and these are the counties in Nebraska. And when we look at all the counties in Nebraska, where do you think Douglas County stands? And when we look at all the counties in Nebraska, where do you think Douglas County stands? With an excellent healthcare system. We are right here in the green. We are actually number fifty-eight. We're number fifty-eight of seventy-three counties that could be analyzed. There are some counties up here in the white that have more cows than people, if I can say so. They were not statistically, but in a good way, but they were not statistically able to have enough numbers to actually rank them. So I want to tell you, and I didn't, I don't want to bore you with the slides, but Douglas County is number three in regards to clinical care. And none of us would doubt that, wouldn't you? I mean, you thought we probably should be number one and I think we should be number one too in the whole state of Nebraska, but we are only number fifty-eight in regards to health outcome. And so I always said that doesn't, it doesn't really mean a whole lot to me because how come I want to compare myself to Antelope County or some county, Scotts Bluff even? That is so much different. It's rural, we are urban. So for the first, I screamed a lot and I think Commissioner Rogers always helped me say, this comparison doesn't make any sense to me, I'm just going to ignore it. Until finally this year, they actually have provided us a tool and they said, you can compare counties to counties. So what do you think? I went out and compared counties and then I showed them to the Board of Health and the Board of Health came back and made actually some additional suggestion. So I think, well, I'll give you the message later on, but let's look through this a little bit. So I'm comparing ourselves and this is mainly due because often our county is compared from a union perspective, from a salary perspective to these counties. El Paso County, Colorado, Jackson County, Polk County, Des Moines, Ramsey County, Minnesota, Sedgwick County, Kansas. So these are the counties pretty similar to us in population. There is some variety in percentage of minority population that some of these counties have. But what you are seeing is, we are actually about in the middle of the pack through all of these indicators. Quality of premature death, this is the number of lives or years of life before you have reached seventy-five years old. So if somebody dies at eighteen, they have lost all those years of life because in an optimum world, we should become seventy-five years of age now, that's kind of the national average. So when you look at that and you call it premature death, again, it is preventable premature, prematurity, we are pretty much the same at sixty-three hundred. Poor, fair health, all of these factors, all of us, we are not the best and we are not the worst. Besides, when you come to those two highlighted ones. Excessive drinking, that is drinking either one drink a female a day, every day, two drinks a man a day, every day. Or it is called binge drinking. Binge drinking would mean during the last thirty years, thirty days, as a female, you had four drinks in a sitting and as a male, you had five drinks in a sitting. So it's interesting and I see this now, we see this more and more popping up as an anomaly in our community that we probably need to start talking about. These are adults. This is not what we say, you know, this occurs on college campus. This is adult. And the measures were all the same for all these counties. So it's not somebody is measuring different, these are national data, this is not local data that is used. So I found this very interesting. The other thing of course is, it's just to show you, because often people tell me, well, you know, STDs are high in Douglas County because it's an urban area, you would find it as high in other urban counties. No, you don't. You don't. As you can see typically here, we are by far the highest in this community. Now these are some of the others which are interesting too, and Commissioner Borgeson, you need to look at this. This is mental health providers. This is for 270 individuals in Douglas County, we have one mental healthcare provider. We actually are the best from all of these different counties. So this brings an interesting discussion and I think Commissioner Borgeson knows this, we are not a shortage area for mental health providers. But what is it in our community that we always still talk about, we need more mental healthcare providers? Are we burning them out? Are we not paying them enough? Are they not taking Medicaid clients? So a bigger discussion I think around this needs to occur and I'm starting to hear regions to talk about resilience, that there is a burnout in these individual and so now some training probably, how we can strengthen them in those efforts maybe. And the other thing that is interesting, and again, this is national data, 3.7 percent unemployment rate, we are the lowest from all these different counties. We know that there are pockets in our community where the unemployment rate is much higher than 3.7 percent. So I don't think we are going to be fooled by that. But still, when you look around, across all the different counties. The other thing I wanted to share with you, violent crime, we are pretty much at the top, not quite as bad as Sedgwick County. And that could be an anomaly in their data just for that one year. But there are some interesting, well, I may not have it on here. Oh, here it is. Severe housing problem. Sixteen percent of our housing stock has severe housing problem. And you know what they mean under severe housing problem? Overcrowding. The cost per rent exceeds 50 percent of the income of those individuals. They don't have kitchen facilities in those homes and plumbing isn't up to code. So again, you know, if people don't have safe and healthy homes to live in, I think that goes back to the social determinants of health. Driving alone to work, we are not different than any others. Actually, the commute for us is a little bit shorter. This is, if you have a 25-minute commute, you see there is Polk County, Des Moines too, that is pretty dense, but you see some of the other counties are a little bit more widespread and therefore the commute is. So anything else that sticks out to you? Like I say, we are mainly in the middle of the pack here. I think it is. So the last slide is, where we live matters to our health. And there are discrepancy, or disparities in health where we live. There is actually a new study now that we are just putting together where you can see that the lifespan is a 10-year difference from a zip code in Douglas County on the eastern part versus a zip code in west Omaha. A 10-year difference. So we could say where we live matters and health is more than healthcare. So that's my last slide.
I was going to ask you, thank you for your presentation. I was going to ask you, and maybe it's something you may tell us later, but you know, we've all heard about Flint, Michigan, the water situation. Is Douglas County Omaha doing enough?
You know, we have lead pipes. We have lead pipes too. We have immediately when Flint, Michigan occurred, we talked to MUD about this and we said, how do we compare? And even so, actually, one of our division chiefs receives the numbers from MUD every day, but every month. But those are only the numbers of the water that they are treating coming out of their facility. But what we are seeing is in what MUD has actually now put into a newspaper article in the Omaha World Herald is, that the water is not aggressive in this community, meaning there is a protective layer, an inside layer around the pipe. Therefore, the lead cannot leach into the drinking water. And so what we are finding, and I went back to staff then and I wanted to see how some of the data in regards to childhood blood lead levels look for us, we actually go down. So and we find the source of the potential lead hazard every single time. I said, have we ever had an incident where we didn't find it and where then the next step would be to look at the drinking water? And so far, that hasn't occurred. And lead is very interesting actually in children's blood. Once you take the child away from the exposure, the lead levels go down automatically. It's only at very high levels that those children need to be chelated and put into the hospital. So the assurance is from MUD and from the state who oversees the Safe Drinking Water Act, that we are not having the same problem in Douglas County.
When were lead pipes, I mean, in homes not used? I mean, you know, when we...
You know, I think the same area that you saw on my county map, those are probably also the areas that have still lead pipes.
I was thinking of what year it might have been?
Probably in the 60s. Probably in the 60s. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. I asked you a question about air quality the other day and asthma rates have gone down. Has our air quality improved dramatically?
It has improved, I would say. We have a really strong monitoring system. I think we used to have issues when we had had industry within the city that always created issues and once those moved out of the city, I think our air has improved and that could be part of it. But I think the asthma rate has a lot to do with you having an asthma plan, you having medication and taking your medication regularly. So it is, you know, it is, it is air pollution related, but it's also you need to take care of your own health. So it's both.
And many of our buses, city buses are now compressed National, CNG. Has that helped?
It has helped.
Tremendously or just a little bit?
Well, just every little bit helps, you know, every little bit helps. And we are going to go into the summer season again where we see our ozone levels increase and where we want to encourage everybody to take those little steps, like mow your lawns in the evening when it's not the highest sunlight, especially if you have one of those gasoline-powered mowers. Also fill up your gas tank, not in the middle of the day because that again evaporates and provides ozone. So every little thing helps.
And does a county provide water testing if somebody were to bring you a sample of water out of their faucet?
No.
Okay. Do you know what the average cost is if they go to one of the commercial testing companies? And this would be a guess, I know.
It depends on what they want to test for. You know, there are easy tests, there are more sophisticated.
They just want to test for lead.
The lead has, I want to say it's less than $20, but it would have to be sent to a laboratory, Midwest laboratory, A and L laboratory, could be sent to the state potentially.
Okay. And I noticed on one of your charts, by the way, I'd like a link to those charts if you could email it to me, or just the charts themselves, either way. I noticed on your percentage health, living health qualities, teenage births and a relationship between STDs and the numbers as they go across. Do you have any more data on that or anything?
No.
Oh, sure.
So teen birth, you saw there were 35, if I remember right, 35 teen birth per 100,000 birth. The Adolescent Health Project has now start, is going to start in about two weeks, the next phase. And the next phase of the Adolescent Health Project is addressing teen pregnancy. They are going to address it again as they did STDs with testing, they are providing contraceptives, they are doing a very in-your-face type of campaign. I want the board to know that the health department doesn't really have anything to do with that phase of the project because that's not what our clinic does and we are strictly only STDs. So I don't want any phone calls, what is the health department doing now? We are not, we are not involved in that. But you know, more power to the Adolescent Health Project that they are addressing that because we know teen pregnancy, poverty, less education, less college degrees, all have something to do with it. But I also want to tell you, the health department is very much data-driven and teen birth are not an epidemic.
Okay. And my last question, I saw that dramatic decrease in the number of children per thousand tested at half lead. And I've seen the dramatic increase in the number of children tested. And I can see a correlation because we're using a larger pool, that the percentage, while it used to be we only tested those we suspected of having it. And is that a correct correlation?
That is a correct correlation, but I do think, again, lead poisoning is asymptomatic.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kamala?
Thank you, Dr. Poor. And thanks for your presentation. This is very informative. I appreciate a copy of the PowerPoint. Some of the charts are difficult to read from this perspective and so if you could forward that to me, that would be appreciated. Three major areas caught my attention and Commissioner Craft dealt with the lead one, I think I've had discussions with MUD folks too and their opinion comports with what you've relayed to us today, that we're not in any Flint, Michigan type of a situation here. We've got reasonably good water. But on the STD question, and I couldn't tell from the information here today, but you indicated that at least in some of the categories, we have by far the highest level of STDs in comparable jurisdictions. And I was looking at the charts as they flashed by, there's three main categories, chlamydia, syphilis, and gonorrhea.
Well, really, when we talk about STDs, we talk about chlamydia. Chlamydia is the number one STD in Douglas County and I think you will find the number one STD in the state, in the nation. Gonorrhea is number two. Syphilis is just one that has come up lately and that we want to look out for. So I'm sorry you saw that slide, I actually wanted to take that out too because we don't have an epidemic in syphilis neither. But we need to address it and we need to know the data.
Right. But if memory serves me, we have had this relatively high level here for some time, is that right?
The STD?
Yes.
Yes. You are absolutely right.
Yeah. And dealing with that, I mean, I suppose there are reasons why we would be, you know, higher than comparable jurisdictions episodically, but over time, leading the region, the country, our class of jurisdictions, why is that? Why do we over time consistently have higher incidence than other areas of the nation?
If I would know that and could address that, I wouldn't be standing here. Because one of these days I will come to you and I will show you the rate is decreasing. But it takes an enormous effort and to a certain, you know, it is an infectious disease. So one individual is infected out there, doesn't have any symptoms and is infecting four around themselves. And it's kind of, the infection is here and until we really have stopped that infection rate, it's not that the behavior of our young people is different, it's that our infection rate is different. If I had the choice and if you talked to MUD and we could put some antibiotics in the water to treat everyone at once and get an infection taken care of, then we would all be just a joke. But yeah, it's a big issue.
Other models that we could look to elsewhere in the country where they've had similar high levels of STD over time and they have come down?
We have looked, we have looked across the nation for models of this and what we have found is that the campaign that we are using here to really start the... we have found is that, uh, the campaign that we are using here to really start the conversation about S T Ds is a campaign that comes out of Milwaukee. It's actually a campaign that is pretty much free of charge for us, because they have had success in decu, with this guerrilla type of campaign, decreasing the teen pregnancy rate. And so we are saying, would the same type of campaign also decrease S T Ds in Douglas County? And so that's kind of what we are looking, uh, looking to do. And I think it has had some impact, because we hear more and more, when we look at the social media hits that these campaigns have, they have videos on them and how often the kids or younger people are watching these videos, we must say, well, it must stick with them. They must be seeing something, hopefully changing their behavior. Because on a Friday night, when I go home from work, uh, I walk by our clinic, and the clinic room is full with young people who come in for testing. But it is, you know, it is like a village. It's not only healthcare provider, it's education, it's churches. Everybody plays a part in this to really have the same message to young people that this is affecting your health. You need, the choices that you make now as a young individual can have consequences later on in life. And the moment we start openly to talk about it, I think we'll see a change.
Um, are we doing something new this year that we haven't tried before?
Yes. We are doing, uh, the adolescent, uh, the adolescent, uh, the education to parents is different this year. We haven't done that before. We haven't really outre, reached out to parents as much as we are going to do this year. So that is one difference. The other difference, uh, I have to tell you, has to do with some condom distribution, because we are also finding out, and I found that out a long time ago, actually when our Katrina individuals were here, and they called me up and they said, how come, you are the health director, how come there are no condoms in downtown that we can get? Uh, and, you know, I didn't know what to say. Uh, so there is now really an effort also through the adolescent health project to make condoms more available, because I heard again this morning, pharmacies put condoms behind closed cabinets. Well, how, how do you think a young person is gonna go then to the front register and say, I need to purchase something there that you have closed up? So we need to make those, all the tools available for our young people. Abstinence only is always our choice. That's the safest way to prevent yourself from a pregnancy or from S T Ds. But we know not everybody follows that. Fifty percent of, uh, students who graduate from high school have had sexual, uh, relationships.
Um, if you could possibly, when you forward the information from today's presentation, uh, attach some historical information relative to this question, so that we could see those graphs. And I, I, I think they went back some period in time.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I can give them back to you.
But they were difficult to see in this format.
Two thousand and four.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know how far back we have been leading the region or the nation in this category, but I know that it's been some, some time, because we're kind of notorious for our exceptionally high levels of S T D. And, you know, we all need to work on this. And if you need any additional resources from us, uh, you know, please let us know. The access to care question, I noticed that you had, and again, trying to read these from up here is not the easiest thing to do. Um, but a couple of the goals, I guess, in this maybe from your strategic plan, was, um, to increase access to care among populations. And if I read this right, in two areas, the northeast and southeast sectors, there was a decrease in access to care.
No, an increase, an increase.
The, the charts seem to indicate that there was a five percent decrease in the northeast-
Is that decrease?
And a one and a half percent decrease in the southeast. So that was-
That was wrong. It's an increase.
I see.
The access has increased.
And the increase in, uh, health insurance coverage was 3.7 percent. Is that just in the last year?
That's, uh, the, the assessment was done three years ago, and then again last year. So that's from three years ago, 2015.
Was the implementation of the Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, a significant driver in that increase in coverage?
Yes.
Thank you. And had the state adopted, uh, Medicaid expansion, would that increase have been substantially enhanced?
Oh, you could, you could assume that, yes. I mean, ninety-seven thousand individuals would have been more, would have been covered under the expansion. And I always say a third is Douglas County, so thirty thousand people could have been covered.
Okay. And those folks who don't have any form of health insurance coverage, when they come for treatment, those bills are paid by whom?
By you and me.
By Douglas County's general assistance budget?
And usually, uh, and, uh, general assistance by the emergency room. Most of those individuals go to the emergency room, because that's where the most expensive care is being, is being kept. But also general assistance, absolutely right.
Thank you. Um, when you indicated that we have, uh, above-average, um, mental health-
Provider.
Resources providers, um, is that significantly enhanced by the fact that the Douglas County Mental Health Center currently has four psychiatrists on staff and a plethora of, uh, mental health, uh, people in addition to that?
I wouldn't say that. That's a national database who looks at the workforce, and that's, uh, you know, not specific to, uh, special organizations. So that's the, that's the workforce.
Do you know of any other, uh, healthcare provider in Douglas County that has four or more psychiatrists on staff?
I wouldn't know, no.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Menon Chair. I want to give some more context of the question Commissioner Kavanaugh asked, and you might be able to help me, because you were kind of in the beginning of this. Um, I think, Dr. Poor, and correct me, it's fair to say that, at least to the effort, this is the first time we've had probably as a comprehensive of effort as we've had. Um, we've been laid as a community to some of the best practices. Initially, when the Board of Health, uh, when Commissioner Borgeson was the rep declaring epidemic, I think we were the first ones talking about it at that higher level of epidemic proportions. And then there were several groups that came in to some degree, and for a while, there was a campaign, and, and things were kind of low. Um, we couldn't have, we didn't have penetration with Y R B S to get some data to some degree. And, um, I don't know if there was a denial, but there was a reluctance to really have health services penetrate the public school. So now you have, um, the increased campaign by the Women's Fund. You have the constant effort that we've been keeping. You have school-based health clinics that are in now at levels. And you have the update to the curriculum that's happened to add that added element. And also you have, um, uh, just an increase. Um, and you have the Y R B S now being put in, and us being able to have some data and track it. So these, these mixed elements, hopefully, um, once they can get a chance to churn and work through, hopefully, I, we'll hopefully see what those numbers say in the next three years, to see if that concentrated effort and some really forces coming collaboratively can help bend the curve on that number. So, uh, I just wanted to add that on that piece.
Um, Adi, thank you again for the, um-
Report. I always love this report. Um, but I have a question in terms of with the successes that we've had where we're pulling off, uh, asthma as one of the priorities. That's great. But is there still going to be a underlying effort for some of those things to continue? Because a lot of times, and I'll give, I'll just use domestic violence as a good example, is, um, or even, um, the drug abuse, um, campaign that O C P did many years ago. You do a campaign, it's in everybody's face, you educate, you build that awareness, and then you will start to see, you'll see an increase in reporting, but then you'll also see a decrease in action. And so, but then, everybody kind of thinks, well, then that's all we have to do. So how are, are there plans that that piece continues to exist? It's just that we're not moving it or putting it in our array of priorities?
Correct. And, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, often when things fall off, then they really fall off, and then they get worse again, and that's when they get your attention again. So, uh, I am really, uh, lucky that one of the division chiefs, Dr. Fix, his interest is asthma, and he is actually just presenting a paper on a national, uh, national conference. So we will keep that data always up to date. We are trying to compare it from year to year to see where it fluctuates or not. And so you can be assured it won't fall off from our radar screen. Uh, also, we just assured, again, Mappa, that we will do the Little Steps program, which is a program in regards to ozone, uh, which is also a trigger for asthma. Uh, and, you know, with our air monitoring station, uh, we always will want to look at the, at that asthma rate. So yes, I agree with you. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll keep it on our radar screen. It just isn't going to be a priority.
Okay. And then just lastly, the, um, uh, priority, violence becoming a priority. I am extremely pleased to see that as a priority, because I can still remember to this day, um, sitting in the, um, Our Healthy Community Partnership meeting, and Carolyn Green asking, you know, we're talking about all this health stuff, what are we doing about the violence? And everybody just kind of sat there silent, because there wasn't any discussion about it at this point. And she triggered that discussion, and, um, I'll never forget that moment. It was a very emotional, um, meeting from there on. Um, so I'm glad to see that as, uh, one of our public health priorities. So, thank you. So, um, very good. If you can just give these slides out to everybody, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one public hearing, a Class C license for beer, wine, distilled spirits on and off sale, The Hills Event Center, LLC, D B A, The Hills Event Center at seven zero five zero North One Hundred and Second Circle, and manager application for Barbara Ecton Camp of one two two three Linwood Lane. Um, this is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this license? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there-
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Morgan, seconded by Boyle. Please vote. We'll move to the co, finance committee. Um, first item is the budget report as presented.
I deal with that.
U S Senator, you're, you're, you'll never, you know, oh.
His microphone, come on. There we go. Thanks, Sam. Thank you. Oh, no, Sam. Thank you. No, I have no comment. No comment. I'm a U S Senator. I have no comment.
Okay, I'm gonna mention something. Joe, you can correct me. We're gonna have a long finance meeting. And the reason why is not because Doug's here, but it's, uh, county attorney, the public defender, the sheriff, corrections, and youth center. Now, they could all come in at about one percent. We'll have a very short meeting. So, Joe, this could be long, three o'clock, whatever.
Yeah, I, I think it'll easily take, uh, at least two hours today.
All right.
I'll be timing, but I think it'll be more. But it's still great to ask the questions, and, uh, we'll go from there.
All right.
And we'll probably, uh, we don't have another executive session, do we?
Yes, we do. I'm sorry.
Probably go till four o'clock.
We can vote no.
Okay.
We'll earn our money today.
Vote no on the executive session.
Yeah.
All right. There is one other item, and that's an agreement between General Assistance and Heartland Workforce Solutions to provide career readiness, preparation, training. Thirty thousand dollars, this was budgeted. Uh, this was taken out of, incurred in two thousand fourteen fifteen, and we're, uh, moving forward with the contract. Um, currently, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Rogers, seconded by Boyle. No questions or comments? Please vote. Um, next, we have the Human Resources Committee, a weekly personnel report, uh, from civil service as presented, and then legislative items. Um, I am getting a scheduled time with our lobbyists to come and present a, uh, present formally on the end of the year, um, legislative happenings. And so, um, that will be in the next couple of weeks. Commissioner Boyle?
Uh, I'd like to suggest that sometime this summer, uh, that we, and before that, we talked to the city and Metro Community College and maybe the other interested governmental bodies about bringing some, uh, senators, the state legislative kind, uh, into Omaha, and, um, ask them to bring, uh, their spouse or significant other, and give them a, a feel for what Omaha is really about, Douglas County, some of our facilities. I think a lot of times, they're operating in the abstract. One of the comments that triggers this is one of the senators from, uh, Western Nebraska made a remark about, uh, said something to the effect, maybe we have too many community colleges, which I think is a, uh, and it dealt with their funding issues that were before the legislature at the time. And I just really think that, um, you know, that's not a good thing to hear, uh, because of the role they play. I'm familiar with it. I have, I have had grandchildren go through and so forth, and it's very extremely valuable, constituents and all the rest. But the other thing is, uh, the impact on our correction facility and so forth is some of the legislation. I think it'd be a good thing if we could develop three or four places to take some of the senators, the city and, uh, operation, a county operation, maybe a school operation, uh, and then have them have dinner at the zoo, something like that. Might be a good deal.
Okay.
If the Kellys think so.
Okay. No other questions or comments? We do have need for an executive session for litigation, litigation.
P J.
Motion to go into executive session for litigation purposes? I need a motion. Ella?
Some seconds.
Motion by Rogers, seconded by Morgan. Please vote. Don't do it, Claire. Don't do it. I can see the wheels turning. I can see it cappening. Huh? Uh-huh. Claire was thinking.
Okay.
Oh my, I hope your wife would probably beat me up. So, I was trying to dial 7025 for Commissioner Boyle, and it doesn't go. Oh my goodness. Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reconvene adjourned.
Second.
Motion to reconvene in adjourned.
Let me vote for mine. Do you have mine, Ella?
I do, yes. Motion passed. I don't know who.
So we're going to meet at one?
Yeah.
Very good. That's perfect.
See ya, thanks.
So Mike, you're not happy with your lawn?
Oh, I am.
Did we hire a new car? Yeah, the resident.
...